Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lake Bluff Public Library Board of Trustees. I officially call this meeting to order on Tuesday, March 21st at 7:04 PM. I'm going to be calling to order and also doing roll calls. So I will start with the first trustee on my Zoom list. Trustee Church. You're muted, Janie. You're still muted. Yes, I can.
There we go.
Sorry, Janie, one more time. You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm here.
You are officially here. Thank you. Trustees Audi.
Here.
Trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Here.
Trustee Graziano.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and I know that trustee Hayes will also be attending later on this evening. Thank you all. With that, do I have any additions or corrections to the agenda for tonight? Hearing, oh, I'm sorry. Did I hear something?
No, I was saying none.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Hearing none, I will move over to the opportunity for public to address the board. This is included in every single one of our libraries' meeting agendas. It is a right from the public to come to these meetings and address the board. Each member of the community is given five minutes. Every committee, every community member will be timed and they'll be informed when they have one minute and 30 seconds left for their opportunity to speak. The board can determine if they would like to respond after, but they are not required to respond. So with that, do we have anyone here who would like to address the board this evening?
Hi, I would like to address the board.
Thank you. Welcome, Dave. We're glad to have you. So with that, I will go ahead and start my timer and you have five minutes.
Great. Well, so this is, this is so wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for having this, this public board meeting, the opportunity for citizens to come and, and address. My, just a bit of background about myself. My wife and I moved here with our eight-year-old daughter and six-year-old son in October of this year from, from, we were about out in the Bay Area, California, to be closer to family. This has just been a very cute little town, you know, couldn't be happier with it. The library is adorable and just, just very wonderful and lovely. But there was, there was something that brought, that caught my attention when I was at, at the library recently, browsing some books. I was actually in the physics section. I'm into some physics books and I turned around and the books behind me, one caught my eye. And I, I just wanted to bring it up because I, I paged through it and it was, um, you know, I'm 100% for, you know, free speech and I think our library should have a, you know, a, a good variety of books and voices and opinions. But this, this book, this book was a little distributed in some ways. It's, so the book was called The Trayvon Hoax. It's about Trayvon Martin, the, the person who was, who was shot down in Florida. And I was, as I was paging through it, it, it struck me as a little, little oddly written and I, I, it was quite inflammatory. And I, I looked into it. It's a, it's a self-published book by this person who's like a, like a known conspiracy theorist who, you know, his Wikipedia page talks about him believing that, I don't know, different, I don't know, a lot of crazy different conspiracies and and I, I thought, you know, maybe there's another reason that, you know, the library would select this book. I, you know, it has, maybe it has some other value. I did a WorldCat search and we appeared to be the only library in Wisconsin, Illinois, Iowa, Indiana, none, no one close. I, there was some library 400 miles away, I think, that, that carried it, but no one around here seems to carry it. And so, I mean, I, I think it's an important topic, but it, it just, it led me to wonder, you know, how, how is it we came to cho- choose this book? And, you know, perhaps was it the best? The best book we could have chosen on this topic? I, I looked up, there were some, you know, award-winning books that, that, that addressed the topic in similar ways and and, and, and I, I just thought this, you know, it's possible, you know, slipped in through the cracks or, you know, I, I assume nothing nefarious or, 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 you know, maybe it was made for a good reason, but I, I thought it worthwhile to just bring it to the attention of, of the board and, and just, you know, say like, you know, hey, is, i- is this, you know, is this the kind of book that we, you know, want to have? Is it, is it providing value to our, to our community? It just, it just seemed perhaps not the qualities of, I don't know, that, that I, that I would have hoped to see in, on, on this topic. And, and that's all I really have to say.
Well, I, well, first I just want to say thank you to you, Dave, for coming and engaging with us in this really important conversation. As a library director, I started on January 3rd, so I'm relatively new to the community and I'm thrilled with the, the warm reception I've received. And also the staff that I currently manage at the library who have really excellent work in managing our collections. That said, I don't have the, the historical information that I can share with you as to why this book was selected. I can tell you that we are a library that will often purchase a book if there is a community request for it. Now, I can't say that this particular book officially was purchased because of a community request. I'm just sharing that as a potential, potential option or explanation as to why. And I appreciate your knowledge of WorldCat. It's a great resource that we use to identify interlibrary loan and, and you're right to acknowledge that it's a book that not many other libraries in our area have. Um, we do, I just want to provide you a little bit of information about our request for reconsideration process, which you may already know about. Every citizen has the ability to come to the board in these meetings, but also if there's a particular feedback that they have about a particular book, they're invited to fill out an official request for reconsideration form. Oh, so then I, you know, what I want to do is say, you know, your feedback today has been noted and if you'd like, I'd be happy to follow up with you individually with some of the answers to your questions after this meeting. And
Sure, that, that'd be great. That'd be fine.
And I just wanted to share with you that we have this process. So if ever there was a situation where you identified a book such as you have and are questioning the library's decision to keep it on the shelves, this is a formal process that we have that goes to the library director and eventually the board to be reviewed in detail at committee level.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah, so just wanted to share that knowledge or that process with you, if that was something that you were interested in. But of course, your feedback today has been noted. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to any board members, if at all, who, who have anything additional to share in response to Dave's feedback tonight.
Well, I, I will just say that, sorry, Bonnie, I'm Janie Gerstein, recording secretary of the board and I appreciate your coming forward. And in addition to this video recording being put in the public record, your remarks will be in, in the minutes as well.
Okay.
And hi, hi, Dave. This is Bonnie. I am the vice president on the board. Our president's not able to make the meeting tonight. I'm sure if she would, she would also comment and, and respond to your, your comments. I'm telling you my best job doing this. She's usually, you know, the, the first person. We have many teachers and other, other people on our board. And, you know, just thank you. Thank you for coming forward. We have indeed had other requests for reconsideration at our adorable Lake Bluff Public Library. And so should you want to formally submit that request, we'd be more than happy to take a closer look at that piece that is within our collection. I would say, and I would ask the staff on the board to correct me if I'm wrong, if anything needs to be reframed. You know, the, the, the collection decisions happen with the staff. Um, but when community members have any concerns, we're happy to have them come up to the board level and we will, you know, handle them swiftly. So thank you for coming and, you know, should you decide to submit that formal request, we will take it promptly.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I did. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that process, but that's, that's, that's great. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to my wife and yeah, maybe we'll just decide to do that. Yeah, this gives me some more transparency into how things work and, yeah, thank you very much.
Welcome to our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome, Dave. And just to follow that up with an invitation to email me directly, you can find my contact information on the website. I can point you to that process and that form. And, and like I said, answer any additional questions you may have about the book after I connect with staff. So um, thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate your public comment.
Okay, wonderful. Great. Maybe I'll just catch a few more meeting, minutes of meeting, but I'll just turn my, turn my video off.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other opportunity for public comments? I don't believe so, but just opening it up. Okay. With that, we shall move to the approval of the minutes from the February 21st board meeting, which I am now sharing on our screen, which you all have received in your board packet ahead of time prior to this meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, February 21st? Or are there any changes or additions?
Move to approve.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Tuesday, February 21st minutes from the Library Board of Trustees meeting has been approved. Motion passes. Thank you all. All right, letting Jenny back into the meeting. All right, the next item on our agenda is the director's report and I promise to be brief at the seven minutes that I have allocated myself for tonight's meeting. First, I want to say that this director's report has been reorganized to align with the priorities set forth in the library structure with our committees. So you will see this report structured this way going forward. You will see a technology section. You will see a programming and events and outreach section. You will see a building and maintenance section. And then if there are any thing, is, if there's anything noteworthy, I will identify that in a separate section as well. And then, of course, there's a staffing section. And the first thing I want to highlight is the incredible flexibility and hard work of the staff. Since I started on January 3rd, I have experienced a, a very thinly-staffed organization. We had a staff member leave January 15th. And due to a lot of situations since then, until now, today even, staff illnesses, funerals, family emergencies, so many things. We are working very hard to keep the library open and operation. And that does not happen without the incredible work and flexibility of an incredible staff that we all are grateful to have. So I just want to verbally acknowledge them all today and let you know that is one thing that we are currently experiencing. Um, I am thrilled to be able to work with our community engagement and communications coordinator Jill and our adult services manager Martha to have regular communication meetings. And I'm finding that in these meetings, we're looking forward to streamline processes. We're cutting out some redundancies in our work. We're able to plan ahead, which is something that I think staff have not had capacity to do in the past. And we're able to prioritize new work in communication that we haven't before as demonstrated with the Star Library Communication Campaign. And so we wanted to share the, some social media highlights. Everyone feels a little differently about social media, but it is a method of engagement in the community just through our technology and digital means. And in over the last month, this post on all of our platforms has been the hot most engaged post across all of our platforms. And so we will continue to look for opportunities to showcase that all to you. If that is of interest, but we do have a presence online and it is strong considering our small, our small but mighty staff. There's been a lot of work in the technology area since I've started. Martha and I have had the opportunity to meet with CBI and this is our contracted service that manages a lot of our technology and equipment and our software implementation for the library. We received essentially what it is, is a technology planning schedule to identify short-term and long-term replacement costs for our various devices and equipment across the organization. So not only was I able to get a sense of the, the library with which we have technology, kind of a evaluation of all, all the devices, but we're able to identify which ones we need to update the most with the most priority. And that is our wireless access points, which we are budgeting for in the new year, new fiscal year, as well as implementation of Microsoft 365. And I've also shared a little bit about our learning about palacity. I just have to share my gratitude to the, to the village who has really helped me in learning about our software and there are many efficiencies we are going to explore with that. In addition, we hired Gary's Handyman Services in the month of February. It may sound like forever ago, but that's when our HVAC issue started, that first couple, those first couple days of February. And we did a lot of building and maintenance work to keep the building open as much as we possibly could. And then lastly, what I will share is that, you know, we do continue to see incredible work about the passports and one, one particular statistic I wanted to share is from our most recent evaluation from the Illinois State Department. Our library has a suspension rate of 0.5%, which essentially means they've had to deny 0.5% of our applications from the state level due to error. Normally libraries and other agencies, passport agencies have a much higher suspension rate of four to 5%. So this was remarked upon as really excellent. And I think that that speaks to the quality of our passport agents and how well they evaluate those, those passport applications. The last thing I'll say is that it's, our passport agents do a lot of work, but we also get incredible amount of questions at the service desk. Every staff member in the building helps support passport services by answering questions. I was on the desk today and we had several staff answer those questions. So it is truly a library-wide effort and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the director's report at this time.
I, I referred my daughter-in-law and granddaughter over there last week for passport news. They said it was a wonderful experience. So.
That's thrilling. Thank you so much, John. I'll be pass that along.
Good.
John, this is Katie. I actually was the one who did their passport appointment.
Oh, good. Well, well.
And no, they, yeah, they, they mentioned that to me as well, which I, I was very, I thanked them very much for that and, and told them I was very appreciative.
Well, thanks for helping them out. They, they they really enjoyed the experience.
Great, thanks.
No questions, but just a commentary. Kudos to the staff, excuse me, on those performance marks. I mean, to grow this from nothing and to scale it as quickly as we have and the upside we've had to all of our forecasts. And, you know, with no additional add to staff to support it, that's, that's really incredible. So kudos.
Thank you, Matt. I'll be sure to pass that along.
Hey, Renee, just, just a quick question about the format of the director's report and kind of having it earlier in the meeting. Certainly I feel like I'm able to digest more of it being earlier in the agenda and I love the way that it's organized against the kind of committee structure.
Great. Thank you so much for that feedback. I did hear from a few of you in response to my email with feedback and that was the decision point for me and moving it eventually. And just to confirm with everyone, it's, it aligns with Robert's rules and what our, our peer libraries are doing. So really trying to make the most of our reporting for you all with that. So thanks for the feedback. Okay. Before moving on to the next item in the agenda, what I'd like to share is that I will be doing and working with staff to evaluate the effectiveness of the way that we present statistics to you all. I think there's opportunity to make it more readable and digestible as well. We haven't had capacity yet to do that. And so what I just want to say is that I look forward to presenting our statistics to you in a more condensed way, while still giving you the information that you need to assess how the library is doing. The one statistic that I will share is this. Our circulation totals, as you can see, have been steady since the pandemic, which is identified right in this part, portion of the graph. We have returned to pre-pandemic circulation levels. And I think that that is a credit to also our online and our digital circulation as well. But I just want to say that in terms of serving the community with materials that are relevant to them, we are, we are back at that level. So I'm very happy to report that statistic. So with that, I'm going to zoom past many pages. And move on to the next item in our agenda, which is actually our financial reports. And so with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and share my screen to the correct version of the revenues and expenditures report. I'm going to thank you all for your patience as I continue to manage some issues with BSNA. There's a ticket currently out that Bettina is working on with BSNA reps. So that, this is the current version of the revenue and expenditure report for this period ending February 28, 2023.
Hey, Renee, can you just zoom in a little bit?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Is that better?
Yes. Although maybe out a little bit because we can't see all the way to the percent. Yeah, there you go.
Wonderful. Thank you. Sure. So I'm only going to highlight two things on the revenue and expenditure report tonight. The first thing I want to say is that we are on track with receiving all of our property taxes as we've received 98.95% so far. And so I'm confident by the end of the fiscal year, we will receive 100% of that. And then the next thing that I want to share is with regards to the medical insurance line. I had a, a specific meeting with Bettina, who came to a budget meeting, finance committee meeting, to explain what was going on. You may remember last month, this medical insurance line was incredibly high, even though we had several months to go. And as you can see right now, we are at 100% spent. However, I'm happy to report that this is not an accurate number. For a couple of reasons, Lauterbach and Amen, our accounting firm, has been working with the library to give estimate numbers essentially each month and inputting that into BSNA for all of our medical insurance costs. And it's, it's something that accounting firms can sometimes do and then they'll sure up at the end of the year, which apparently is what they've been doing to true it up at the end of each fiscal year for the library. And Bettina and I looked at the reports from last year and last budget year, and this is in fact what they were doing. It was the same number every month. And it wasn't an accurate reflection of the actual costs of the medical insurance plans that staff had been participating in. So we were both surprised about this and when we discovered this, Bettina said, you know, this doesn't work for me. And I said, this doesn't work for me either. I can't accurately budget for next year or even share with the board an accurate representation of funds spent. So we are meeting with Lauterbach and Amen to make sure that going forward, it's, the numbers are accurate every month. So that they are no longer using this particular accounting, accounting feature of an estimate number. But that we are actually being updated, we are updating BSNA to what is actually the costs that are being accrued at the library. I did say only two, but I do want to mention, there is a very large percentage here under furnishings. And I'm going to get to it, 288% spent of the budget. And this is our library furnishing budget line. And we received our final bill for the Alify furniture in the stero room this last month. And that is why this line, we knew it would be over budget, but that is, it is the number that it is. Happy to answer any questions you all may have about the revenue and expenses report or the balance sheet, which I'll share in one second. Any questions? If no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the financial reports from February 2023?
I'll motion to approve the financials.
That was Bill. Thank you. Welcome, Bill. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Matt. This is a voice vote. So I will go down my list of trustees here on Zoom. We'll start with trustees Audi.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
And trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Right. Thank you so much. With that, the February 2023 financial reports have been approved. Thank you very much. So next item on the agenda is the check dispersment report. And I did include some information in the invite this weekend, but I am happy to say we are no longer going to be having that voided check every month. We've been looking for process improvements really in everything since I started. And Laurence and I have identified, well, it wasn't, it wasn't me. Laurence had been investigating Amazon business for the library. And so we implemented that along with, you know, the support of other staff too, Anna, Martha, who helped with that research. And because of that, we're streamlining our invoices and we now only receive one collective invoice for all Amazon purchases. So that is why there's no more avoided check. We needed that because all the invoices were listed in that space at the top of the page, on top of the check, we ran out of space. And so we needed to go on to the second page. That's why the check needed to be voided. So just explaining that a little bit to you all. Do I have any questions about anything with regards to the check dispersment report? If none, I will ask for a motion to approve the check dispersment report from February 2023.
I'll approve the checks for February. I don't have the check numbers in front of me, but.
Yes. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. So it would be to approve the February monthly checks, numbers 15540 through 15561. And Janie, those numbers are in the agenda for you.
I've got them. Thank you.
Sure.
A second.
Second.
I heard John first. So thank you, Bonnie. So this is also a, a roll call vote, voice vote. And so, um, excuse me, roll call vote. So I'm going to start with trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustees Audi.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Thank you all. And with that, the check, check dispersment report of February 2023 has been approved. Thank you all very much. All right. There's been a lot of lead up to this discussion. We tabled it for two months in a row. I know our committee, our Building and Grounds Committee has been already eager to discuss this. So just a little context, we will now be discussing the, oh, excuse me, I moved too fast. I was looking at the wrong thing. We're going to open it for, yep, thank you. Thanks, Janie. We're going to move to committee reports. And so for the finance committee, the finance committee was the only one that met this past month. And the chair is trustee Hayes.
Okay, and unfortunately I wasn't there. Okay. And unfortunately, I wasn't there for that meeting, but the understanding is that the budget was finalized or some of the changes in, in, in place there. Which we'll look at at the end of the meeting. As far as some of the other events, I, I would defer to the people who were there at the meeting.
I can add context there. So to elaborate on what Renee was explaining earlier with regard to the medical insurance. The, what I learned some things which I think are interesting. One, we are, we are not in any capacity self insured when the municipalities go to bond. It is as an organization as just as any other corporation would, and it's with a private insurer. So that was interesting to me as, as just a note on the process. Specifically where we run afoul of, of budgeting issues as Renee mentioned with, with our accounting firm louder, yeah. You can, yeah, that one, L and O. They, they were using this estimate. There is a template set every year from which Bettina, the, the finance, the finance director for the village, from which Bettina benchmarks the following year at ten percent increase. So she just inflates the assumption ten percent. They, they were not using that template number. They will moving forward. The expectation is Renee mentioned is that we will come at budget. I would, I would estimate we probably come in under budget. You know, we weren't, we weren't capturing the transition of Eric and his family, the addition of Renee, some subtle changes in premium costs associated with dental. So there were, there are a lot of things that just weren't accounted for that will be moving forward to the extent that we can in the current year, and then with a ten percent increase in the following year from a budget standpoint. Net net, the budget impacts were minimal. We have a hundred thousand dollars in twenty, in our next year budget. I think the estimate is to come in somewhere under around ninety. We left it at that level for now, I believe. And Renee, correct me if I'm recalling incorrectly. I'm not going through.
We did. Yeah.
Yeah. With the logic being that if we have changes in family situations, additions to staff, we have some latitude there.
Thank you so much, trustees Audi.
Yep.
Any questions for the finance committee?
Actually, just for the record, what is the name of the accounting firm, Lauterbach and somebody?
An Amen, A M E N.
Okay.
Oh, L and A. Okay.
It was a vowel, Matt. You got that. I'm sorry. Thanks so much, Janie.
You.
All right. And so with that, now we can transition to the discussion of the building survey report. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen just to reference. And then what I'm going to do is unshare my screen and open it up for discussion. So while I haven't necessarily received a lot of questions or comments via email, I know that this is a topic that we've discussed in every board meeting that I've started in some way, shape or form, building grounds needs. So we're all familiar with it. This was a report that, a survey and a report that was completed in late two thousand twenty two by Engberg Anderson Architectural Firm, which is a firm that we've worked with a lot over the many years to develop design plans to do projects like this. The scope of this report is mechanical engineering and plumbing. And so what they've done is they evaluated our systems and they provided essentially recommendations to us for the various systems. So with that, the committee has met to discuss, the building grounds committee has met already to discuss this and prioritize various projects, some that we have already completed, the HVAC work that came up is in part related, but I'm happy to report that the hot water heater replacement is being scheduled for March twenty ninth. So we are able to move forward with that, which is one of the prioritized recommendations from Engberg Anderson Architects. So that is going to happen very soon. So with that, I'll just open the floor for reflections, questions, revelations about this report from any of the board of trustees.
But the, the one question I was going to ask is, do they have any kind of estimate that they can give us for each of the items that they identified on there? I mean, obviously the ones that are the ones that are thirteen years out, but it'd be the ones like four years out, then how big do we need to sort of plan for? And, and obviously if there's smaller ones that we can, we can hit. It'd be sort of helpful for budgeting going forward.
Absolutely. And so Sean Kelly, thanks for reminding me, Bill. Sean Kelly from Engberg Anderson actually came to a building and grounds committee meeting to answer our questions and provided the committee with an outline of expected but estimate costs. In fact, we also got a schedule for replacement, essentially a capital, like a plan that we could integrate into a capital plan, which I'm really excited about. And of course, all of that doesn't include inflation or other costs with supply, you know, across the country that could be impacted. But it's a starting place. So we do have those numbers.
Yes. No, you remind me. I remember seeing that spreadsheet now that was on there.
Renee, I was under the impression that some of the, some of the stuff did include an inflation factor.
I think, yes, I think some of it did, but I'm just, I'm just also recognizing that not all, you know, we may not know what the inflation is.
Oh, exactly. Right.
But yes, he talked about that. Thank you for reminding, you for reminding. Any questions or statements of interest with regards to building and grounds work that you'd like to give the committee and guide our work forward?
Well, I, I can tell you that the, the one thing that still is sitting on my shoulder whispering in my ear is the fire protection sprinkler system. And I, I I am not sure what they mean in the statement. It says that the original nineteen seventy four building, which is of course what houses the original part of the library is not protected by a sprinkler system. And I, I don't I, I don't feel like I've, I understand why not and what we can do about it.
So Janie, I have emailed Sean Kelly. This was several, it was right after our committee meeting about this. I had to reforward the email. I still didn't get a response back. I can loop back around to it. I will say that when I was in the museum side of the building, which is the original, which is, is the original building. When I was with Murphy and Miller, well, the original side of the building is this side, not the museum side.
Correct.
Excuse me. I apologize. I mean, I've worked with you all and we've identified what we thought is a sprinkler system. You know, trapped along the ceiling. So there's a question about what that is, if it's not. That. So I will reforward my email and try to get ahold of Sean.
Thank you very much.
An answer, sure, to get an answer to that question once and for all. One reflection I had about this report is that we desperately do need a capital plan. And there are so many things to consider from a building standpoint. One of the things that is not considered in this plan that we asked for a proposal for is really a look at our library with regards to an accessibility lens and also identifying any potential flood risks. Those topics were not identified in this plan. But we have the ability to ask for a plan that I, that really evaluates our library for these areas. I have a cost, a budget proposal that I will present to the next building and grounds. At this time, I, we don't have the budget for this fiscal year, but if we want to gather that information, truly have a comprehensive look on the whole building and its use by patrons, we could certainly ask for that report. Okay.
Hey Renee, it's Bonnie. Sorry, I was a little slow on unmuting.
You're fine.
I think the other thing that the potential additional survey work by Enberg Anderson would do is really kind of evaluate the whole external of the building, right? Because this was really focused on the internal systems, right? Like the circulatory system or the respiratory system or whatever, you know, plumbing, heating. But you know, there, there are some things in regard to like the external accessibility, lighting. We as a board have talked about the possibility of a generator for the library. If so, where's the best place that that would go? So that our library can, you know, operate maybe when the rest of the community goes down a couple of times in the summer when the power goes down as a warming station, as a cooling station for the community, what have you. So I just wanted to comment that there were, like you said, flooding and some other, just, just to go, it's sort of like the exoskeleton, if you will, of the library, evaluating that since we did the internal systems.
Thanks, Bonnie. Yes. As an aside, I know that the high school is going out for referendum and it is one of the things that they are addressing in their communication is accessibility and how the building currently is not an accessible place for students with disabilities to navigate and to be in the school. And so I think about libraries as being a place for everyone. But if there are barriers to access in our building, that's worth noting and certainly worth potential action in the future. Any further questions or discussion? With that, I think Janie and Bonnie, I think we schedule a follow up building and grounds committee meeting as we can, you know, with everyone's schedule in, in mind. And kind of reassess where we are, given the unexpected costs of these last couple of months and kind of re figure out where we're, where we're at right now in the budget year and what we want to prioritize for the beginning of the fiscal year. Great. Thank you all. So the next item, that was our old business. And so the next item is new business. And this is the presentation and discussion of the draft budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four. So I am going to go ahead and share my screen as I get there to follow up with that discussion. Okay. So if you're following along in your packet, this is section nine. Okay. I'll have to do some scrolling. It can't really fit on all one page. It can, but then it's really small. Well, first I just want to thank the finance committee for their incredibly hard work and supporting me and being able to present a budget so quickly on in my tenure here. We have had many meetings and this is the fourth version. It's really maybe the four point five version of the draft budget. And it has seen various iterations as more information has come to the table. What I'd like to share with you is just an overview of this document, what you're looking at for those that aren't in the finance committee. As you see these different columns, what you'll see here is this first blue column. This is the budget of this current fiscal year. So what we're currently allocating for each of our different budget lines. And as you go down, it looks just like our expenditure and revenues report. You'll see our different budget lines going down. This column over here, the green one is actual, actual budget spent or allocated to spend as of December two thousand twenty two. It was a way for us to be able to get some real numbers and real spending to determine maybe some forecasting for what that budget might be, might need to be for the next fiscal year. And so the column that we're really going to be focusing on is this last, is the second blue column, budget fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. What you'll see next to it is the gray section, which identifies the percentage of change from the two thousand twenty two, twenty three budget to the twenty three, twenty four budget. And we have percentages and we also have dollar amounts in both of these columns. And what I just wanted to share with you is that the first page is our revenues page. So this is the money that we are collecting through revenue. And that number is reflected also balanced with the, the, the budgeted expenditures. So the second page is all expenditures, again aligned with kind of the, the expenditure, revenue and expenditure report that you're used to seeing. And that goes on. And then the last one is is a report of the expected grants and gift funds for this particular year. So what I thought I could do is provide some highlights of what areas we focused on. What I'm really appreciative of is the, the committee's support in new ideas of allocating budget to differently, but also making sure that we're still saving. We have adequate money in reserves and so forth. Bonnie, I see your hand is raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just, I wanted to confirm process with you. We vote on this next month. Is that right? This is the.
So we have two options. I was going to open it up for discussion first and then explain our next option. We could vote on it now. But also what I've heard from Bonnie is that there's still time from this board meeting to next board meeting in case we should want to make any changes.
From me or from Bettina?
Did I say Bonnie? I apologize. I meant Bettina. I meant Bettina. Thank you. So.
Do that all the time.
Oh, funny.
I know.
Funny. Um, I hope I don't do that again. That's my, names are important. I apologize.
So I'm like, wait a minute. I don't remember saying anything like that.
That's hilarious.
All good.
Thank you. Yeah. So there is time. What I will be doing is sending Bettina this draft budget at the end of this evening anyway, for her to incorporate into the village's presentation of the draft budget. But even beyond that, there's still time before their approval to make changes if we so choose.
Are we seeing the whole revenue slide now?
No, it's, it's really, um, and I don't know, maybe if it even makes sense, I could just stop sharing and you all could open it up on your own computers. I don't know what's the best way. If I were to show you the whole spreadsheet, it's pretty small.
I, I was just looking for where we show gifts.
Yes.
In the bottom.
Yes, that's going to be the last page of the budget here. It's actually. Mm hmm. So, um, wait, where am I right now?
You're on it.
Yeah, sorry. So this is.
I see there. Yeah.
This is just expected. That said, especially with revenue or donations and grants, like for example, you know, I'm just three months in, there might be a grant that we find that we acquire in the next year. So if we're over budget for our grants and gifts, you know, the friends of the library, or if there's a future foundation gift, that is added here.
Okay.
So with regards to with regards to budget, what I just want to confirm is that this year we received a five percent levy and so that increased our PTEL number, our overall number, budget, five percent. That did provide us with a very good amount of money to reallocate to support various needs. So I'm going to zoom in again just a little bit to identify. We've also in allocating the various budget lines, some of the emphasis, a lot of the emphasis went to staff salary instead of re, but like reallocating some of the funds that were saved from Eric's departure at his salary after ten years to my appointment to the position. We decided to keep that money in the staff salary line, not only for the possibility of if there's a staff member that we need to identify or create a new position on staff, but also to look for opportunities to adjust staff salary according to industry standard. We talked a lot about my interest in working with a company called HR Source to assess where our salaries are in relation to other North Shore libraries in comparison to other Illinois libraries. To see if they are competitive. And my initial observation is they are not. But I would really like to benchmark us according to industry standards and our peer libraries. And in order to do that, staff need a job description. And so that's why that work has been a primary focus and will be in the beginning of the year. Other areas of, oh, go ahead, please.
Yeah, we're, so we're showing you a five and a half percent increase for salaries?
In the salary lines, yes.
How does that compare with last? And this may be unfair because you would have been here, but do we know how that compares with prior years?
I don't. Um, and you know what? I'm just looking at some of the numbers, but I certainly could pull that and send that to you, John.
I'm just curious, you know.
I do, I do know that in looking at one of the the budget presentations from previous years, staff salaries actually went down. There was a staff, there were decisions made for savings in the salary line. And that money was reallocated to reserves in that particular year.
I fully support doing all we can for the staff salary wise, so.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
And that sentiment is echoed by the committee as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Renee, Bonnie, again, I think also there was the departure of a staff member in a decision not to backfill, which may have decreased the total salary line. I just want to be clear, no one, for the best of my knowledge, I don't think anyone took a salary cut.
Nobody took a salary cut, but the year that I'm referencing in the year that was twenty thousand dollars was saved. There were staff members that had their hours cut due to some streamlining of processes. So, and I've had those conversations within the last month or so to learn that. But I, I'm really interested in uh, building up that set, those salary lines again. And looking for opportunities to adjust the starting rate. The example I gave the committee was our current job that we're hiring for, the youth assistant, when they're starting the first week of April. It's a job that requires at least one year professional experience working with kids. At least a college degree and then other work experience. We're paying that job fifteen hours an hour, starting salary. But it's not, it's not a minimum wage job. We're requiring higher levels of experience for this particular position. But we're not, the pay is not at a level with which our peers are paying for this similar work. So if that's our lowest, if that's our lowest paying job, I, I do anticipate adjustments need to be made across the organization.
I wonder, once the comparative analysis is done, if it might be possible to have a one-time adjustment so that we get more in line because sometimes if you're just getting the annual percentage, you never make it up. You never get to where you're supposed to be. So I would put that as, as a possible recommendation that we might consider a one-time adjustment to get us more in line.
And the committee definitely supports that. We've talked about that and that's another reason why this increase is being made in these lines to allow for that as much as possible, depending on what we learn from HR Source. It might have to be a two-year plan. We've talked about this at, with the HR Committee level too. So that I know there's support of that too. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey Renee, for, for you and for kind of all the HR Committee, maybe the whole board. I'd want to make sure that any benchmarking that gets done is actually looking at total compensation, not just salary. Because sometimes, you know, some employers just have richer benefit packages, whether it's in a pension or it's in a 401k or something like that. That helps make up the difference in base salary.
And as far as I know, we've never done any sort of benchmarking or any sort of rewards analysis. My last library, I got a report at the end of every year that identified in dollar amounts how much my salary and my benefits was worth to me as a job. And I'm attending actually a benchmarking training tomorrow that I'm eager to learn and HR Source is the presenter. So I think that is a great way, looking forward to present to staff. Not just salary, but also here is basically the benefit package that you receive and what that is worth. Any other questions about the salary piece? We're focusing on it because there is emphasis there and a lot of good work has been done by the committee to make that happen. I also want to identify a couple other areas that this budget sees, will have focus. Building and maintenance, that should be no surprise to anybody on this call. We are putting as much money as we possibly can into building and maintenance. You will see it's actually a twenty percent increase from last year's budget. And this is in response to a lot of the information we learned and we learned in the Enberg Anderson Report. But as my observations have been just coming on, there is a lot of building and maintenance work that needs to be done, not just with our larger systems, but the day-to-day. For example, today we had all of our fluorescent lights, our tubular lights in the building replaced by Gary and his crew. Home Depot doesn't carry fluorescent lights anymore. Menards had them, but just to purchase eight lights, it was a cost of over two hundred dollars. And the EPA is saying they may no longer have the US be a provider of fluorescent lights. And this building is mostly fluorescent lit. All of our fixtures are fluorescent bulbs. And you can't just put in an LED into a fluorescent fixture. So there is a lot of work that needs doing in the maintenance area. We also put a little bit more in our computer services area, our budget line, excuse me. As we've identified in the director's narrative, we're implementing Microsoft three sixty-five first with staff, then with the public sometime in the new year. And we're looking at updating all of our wireless access points for stronger, faster internet connections. Other things of note. We increased the line both for the public, the library automation software. We are at the end of our contract currently with our our public catalog provider. And that provider is innovative. And so we need to establish who is going to be providing our online catalog. That's the catalog that you search to find books and placeholders. And we anticipate with signing a new contract, there will be increased costs. And so as a committee, we've identified as many, as, as many as we can, those lines that are attributed to licenses or that could be impacted by inflation. And so this is one of them. And we also wanted to maintain library furnishings budget because there are a lot of furniture needs in the library, but I'm hopeful that can be supplemented by our, our friends at the Friends of the Library amongst other things. And then we have budgeted twenty thousand dollars to go into reserve. And that's more than the current budget of sixteen thousand dollars. But I do want to say that we've conservative, conservatively estimated our interest allocations, our, our interest receipt, our interest revenue as well as our passport revenue. So I'm, I'm confident that we'll be able to look for opportunities to utilize those, that revenue in different ways to support the budget. I'm gonna pass it off to Bill. Bill, do you have anything else to add or any further insights?
No, you, you, you mentioned about the fact with the revenue up five percent because of the the increase there, passports and interest income also went up, which is gonna help those budget lines through there. And I mean, you've hit, hit on the, the three sixty-five and the wireless points. Building and maintenance, yeah, we, we obviously have got to start to execute on some of these projects. We've got some that are four years out that we probably, like you said earlier, put a plan together to what we want to do. And then the, the last thing, on the grants, that was a question I asked earlier today.
Thank you. Thank you.
With the exception of the, the capita one, all the other grants will be designated for something else outside of what's in the budget, budgeted numbers. So when we, we're showing on here that we're spending the, the twenty-six thousand. I think Renee and I talked before, the, the per capita expenditure one should be pulling the eighty-four forty number, not the seventy-one fifty-three. So there's twenty-six, two eighty-four. And you mentioned that on the per capita, we have to designate those as budget items. But the rest of it then is going to be for other projects or other items that, that come up that staff and yourself will, will designate, whether it's furniture, whether it's laptops, whether it's something else. But
Exactly. Thanks, Bill. Yeah. I appreciate you reminding that. And so an example here of what a restricted donation could be. The Friends of the Library, we meet with them on April twenty-second and I'm looking for a trustee to come with me. We will be proposing a list of ideas for donation. And then if they approve them, they will be writing a check. And so that donation is restricted in that it is only to be used for those items that we propose and they approved. As opposed to an unrestricted donation, which could be a sponsorship from a local uh, business to support a reading program where it's a little bit more flexible and spending. Or, you know, thinking foundation, if that, if that, that could be restricted or unrestricted. So just providing that scope. Thanks, Bill, for bringing that up.
Yeah.
So opening the floor for any questions or discussion about the budget draft that is before you.
I just want to make one clarification. I misspoke earlier. So once we went through the medical premium estimates, the template, if you will, it was said it, Bettina estimates will come in about eighty-four thousand. We had a hundred thousand in the two thousand twenty-three, four line, so we took that down to ninety-five. redistributed that five across some of these other changes we've discussed. And that leaves us net, net about ten thousand dollars of either latitude, should we have changes to staff or changes in family situation or potential budget savings?
Thanks, Matt. I know the Finance Committee has seen so many iterations of this, so it can be, I, I myself forgot that change. So here's what he's referring to. We budgeted this amount for two thousand twenty-three. We're gonna come just under budget there and we padded it for next year, knowing that with Bettina's calculations, it will sit somewhere underneath this. So we're confident in that. Thank you, Matt. Any questions?
I have one, Renee. I, I was, I just wanted to clarify, when can we vote on this? And I know this begins May first of this year. And did I hear you say that we can still make changes to the budget after that point?
So I'll, I'll confirm. So we can decide to vote on this. You all can decide to vote on this and accept the proposed draft budget as is or with any changes that you'd like to see made on here. And then from there, we can, I'm going to send that to Bettina to include in part of the, the presentation with the villages' budget. Or we can reflect on it and then decide to vote next month. Which if we decide to do that, I would still send Bettina this draft budget so that she has numbers to include in that presentation. So I asked her these in preparation for any any questions or any changes in process that we, that might come up. So we can support a motion tonight to accept the budget as presented. Or we can hold off until more information is maybe needed to present to the board, whatever you all decide.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Bonnie?
Thanks. Sorry, I hit a lot of the reactions there.
No, you're
I'm gonna, gonna try to, try to channel Kathy. I feel like at this point she would say, Bill, as our finance director, what do you think about the budget and voting on it tonight?
I, I, I think, I think we can vote on it tonight. The only exception, like I said earlier, would be just correcting that per capita number at the bottom to the eight four forty. So it's, it's on the same, but that, that's minor because that's, it's included. So I, I think that thi- this has been rung through a number of times. I think from the Finance Committee's perspective, I think it's, it's ready to go to that next level. If something comes up that Bettina has, uh, something changes, we, we can reflect on that, that, that next time. But I don't anticipate any, any other major changes on here.
And just from a governance standpoint, Bettina will put forth the budget that this board approves. So they, there's no oversight that the village has necessarily. You know, we could have even levied higher than the village if we wanted to. We chose not to. But, um, you know, just in terms of us being separate governance, we are. And so they would put our budget forward with whatever numbers the Board of Trustees tonight approves or whenever they approve it. Thank you, Bill, for that recommendation. And I just want to say on behalf of myself, I'm very confident in this budget. I, in the three months that I've had to prepare it with all of you on the committee, I, I think that it gives us the support financially that we need. I'm very happy that the organization moved forward with the five percent levy. And I see that really providing us with some financial breathing room in the budget to support the various things that we want to do. So I do support this budget.
I, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the budget tonight to put forward to the village as our twenty-two thousand, twenty-two four budget with the correction on the per capita grant.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I'll second that. If I can, am I allowed to?
Am I allowed? I'm thinking I'm allowed to. I know I'm not the finance
Yes, even though your committee meetings, yes. Thank you, Bill. So this is, I'm gonna go through the role, the roll call for everybody. Especially as this relates to our budget. So I will start with the first one I see on the list here, Trustee Heitzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee George.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Hi.
And Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
With that, I'm very pleased to say the fiscal year twenty-two thousand, twenty-two four proposed budget has been passed by the Board of Trustees. So thank you all very much. From here, I will be, thanks Bonnie. From here, I will be sending these numbers. I will first be making the correction to the per capita grant page. And then I will be sending these numbers to Bettina, who will include this tomorrow in the villages' presentation. It's a very short turnaround, but as we figured it out, we were able to make it happen. So she will get that. Thank you very much.
Nice work, Renee.
Yeah. Did a great job, Renee, considering being thrown in at the deep end with this.
Well, I, I'm very grateful for such a supportive board. And we all are at, at the library. So thank you all. Good work to us all. With that, I'm going to move on to our next agenda item, which is any other business and open it up to the floor for any other business. I think Jill has something that she wants to share.
Hi, thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes to talk to you. As you might know from previous years, we do Um, as you might know from previous years, we do a partnership with Lake Forest Library in a program called Read Between the Ravines. This year is a book called An Indian Among Lost Indigenous by Ursula Pike. And we are hosting the author event on April fourteenth at the History Center of Lake Forest in Lake Bluff at six-thirty with a brief reception beforehand. The author talk, a Q and A, and a book signing. Um, I also wanted to let the board know that we have copies of the book for all of you and a few uh community members as well. So if you wouldn't mind stopping by the library, we have those ready for you to pick up.
Consider it a gift to you all. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Jill, who has been incredible in helping facilitate this wonderful partnership. I've dropped a link to the um program page uh for you to learn more if you are interested. Um, so thank you, Jill. Great work. Great partnership. Um, I have two quick things. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the Friends of the Library is meeting on April twenty-second. Um, I already have Jenny volunteering for um potentially September or October, so thank you, Jenny. Um, but I am looking for a board member to attend with me um and Jill at the April twenty-second meeting. So you don't have to volunteer now. You can check your schedules. The start time is at eleven AM. It's at the library. The meetings are less than an hour. Um, so to give you all some context, if you're able and willing to come. And then the last thing, um the library always promotes our collection uh to our public. Um, and we have diverse collections that celebrate um a variety of voices and perspectives in our collection. Um, and so uh we just today, thanks to Katie Horner, um we put up our uh display in uh in light of uh Transgender Day of Visibility, which is on March thirty-first. Um, many libraries are doing a month-long display, um elevating stories of those who are transgender um or non-binary community members. Um, the library has a plan to um elevate those stories on social media on the thirty-first, just as we would for Black History Month, Women's History. We've actually already done some engagement there. Um, Pride, we've done that in previous months. Um, so I uh in talking to Bonnie, I just wanted to share uh that update with you all um to let you know that that is coming. Any other business? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn at, dare I say, eight seventeen?
Unprecedented.
Unprecedented. Hey, I just, third time's a charm. Third time's a charm. I, thank you all for giving me that grace.
It predates you.
Oh, gosh, that's great.
I'm not sure if somebody moved, but I'll second.
I'll, I'll move.
Okay. Thank you, John. Bonnie is our second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed. Doubt it. Um, thank you all. Uh, with that, the meeting is officially adjourned at eight seventeen. We are meeting virtually next month, and then starting in May, we will be meeting in person at the library. Dave, thank you for staying on. We're very grateful that you are here and engaged. And um again, welcome to Lake Bluff. Um, thank you all very much, and I'm gifting your evening back to you. Okay, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.